Come to order, please. I want to welcome everybody to this special meeting with the board. We're here to listen to your comments. I know this is an important and possibly emotional issue for a lot of you in the room. We want each person to have the opportunity to voice their concerns to the board. So I'm going to ask a couple of things from the audience. If we're going to allow each person five minutes to speak, the meeting will conclude at 6:00 PM this evening. If you are an attorney representing a group of individuals and you're speaking for them, we ask you to ask them to stand when you come forward and identify themselves for the record. There may be some things in this particular easement that you like or probably dislike, and some of the conditions of the easement are beyond our control. The Corps will have a decision to make in regards to that. A reminder is as you come forward, identify yourself for the record. Please direct your comments to the board, not the audience. Use proper decorum when you're speaking with the board or making your comments. And refrain from applause or outbursts of hoops and hollers and what have you. It just delays the process. It takes a little bit longer, and we want to provide the maximum opportunity for everybody to speak. With that said, I'm going to ask Brad Pickle to come forward and begin this, and once he completes his presentation, then we'll open the floor for comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman and County Commissioners. My name is Brad Pickle. I'm with Seaven Consulting and am the Project Manager for the Walton County Hurricane and Storm Damage Reduction Project, also commonly known as the Federal Beach Nurishment Project. Tonight, I'm going to run through, very quickly so that we can get to the public comments, but run through some of the issues that have been modified and changed from Version 1 from August of 2013, version compared to the last version, which was August 14 of 2014. Just so you all are aware, the latest version of the easement has been posted on the www.protectionwalltoncountybeaches.com site since the week of August 12th. I think we had it up by the 15th, so it was two or three days after the county commission meeting. It has been there for, you know, three weeks. So these, all these changes have been incorporated on that document, and I hope that most of the audience has it. With that, I'm just going to dive right on in. If you have any questions, please feel free to stop me. The first main issue that popped up that we addressed was regarding the easement being perpetual. The initial language had in there that grant bargain and convey unto the Walton County Board of Commissioners and its assigns a perpetual and assignable easement right of way. The two big things that were changed in there was talking about the assignability, which I'll go into in a second, but really it's the second bullet point where it says that the easement hereby granted by the grantor, who would be the homeowner. In all this discussion, just so I can say that, the grantor is the homeowner, the property owner, the grantee being Walton County. But the easement hereby granted by the grantor for use by the grantee will continue until such time as the United States Congress deauthorizes said project. The thought being there is that this project is authorized by Congress for a set period of time. When that deauthorization, or when that authorization is no longer valid, then the project easement needs to be no longer valid. That language was put in prior to the last county commission meeting and is there for discussion. The second issue does go back to the assignability. In the original draft, it had that the easement was roughly assignable to anyone. It says that it's just a perpetual and assignable easement. It didn't call out who that was for. So if you look in the modified language, there was the language put in that the easement was granted to the grantee and its assigns as set up below as an assignable easement. Later on in the language, I think it's a paragraph or two down, it says very clearly that the easement hereby granted by the grantor for use by Walton County, Florida, its representatives, agents, contractors, together with its sole assigned, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, Mobile District. If you remember, the reason why we had to do a sign instead of an agent is the federal government will not be in a sign for a local government. So this was a language requirement, but we were able to tighten it up very specific. It's to the district that's working on the project for Walton County. The third issue, once again, goes back into not only the fact that the easement was perpetual, but how would that be canceled and who would be notified? How would we go about that? So we also included language that said that the grantee, Walton County, shall provide grantor of written notice of such deauthorization within 60 days thereof, and grantor, Walton County again, let me fix that, that should be grantee. That's the reason why you see the note at the bottom. The second grantor should be grantee where it says within 60 days thereof, and Walton, that should say, and Walton County, or the grantee shall record in the official records of Walton County at its expense a notice of termination of this easement within 120 days thereof. We didn't want to make that change because we wanted to present the same easement we did at the last county commission meeting, but I want to point that out, that that is one thing that we would definitely want to make clear, that Walton County will be the ones canceling the easement and notifying the homeowner. It's not a homeowner responsibility. The next one's a really big one. There were three paragraphs in the original language that kind of, it covered a lot of things, had some language that was covered between two different paragraphs, between public roads, highways, utilities, railroads, and pipelines. We condensed all of that language to say that the rights and easements hereby acquired for use of the project for the purpose authorized by Congress, subject however to existing easements for public roads and highways, public utilities, railroads, and pipelines. It was a cleaning up and a condensing of language that was double-covered in a lot of other areas. Big one, public use. Initially, this language was included, as I said in the last meeting, we borrowed it from the Bay County easements that were conducted in the last project or their project where they had this language in their easement, about 161-141. It was in the initial language therefore, and we have completely removed it, completely. It's not in there. Issue number six, there were concerns raised about the justification of the project and what it would entail. We'd been saying it was sand on a sandy beach and dune vegetation, building a dune, raising the beach, and extending into the water, but there were concerns that we weren't clearly defining on exactly what it entailed, getting a little bit more specific. So what we did was we added the congressional authorization language that was passed and signed by the President June 10th, 2014, and said that grantee agrees to construct and maintain the project as authorized in the Water Resources Reform and Development Act 2014 for the duration of the project's congressional authorization. If an owner wanted to see what the backup that was, if you remember, that's all those feasibility studies, we have links in the history of the project off the www.protectionwalltoncountybeaches.com website that goes back into the feasibility studies. They can also access this information from the Mobile District, but it very clearly says what will be allowed and authorized by Congress. Other issues regarding damages to property, specifically, the homeowner had 10 days to notify the county of any damages. That was the initial language. We modified it in two ways. First off, we increased that 10 days to 60 days because there are a lot of people that don't live here that are property owners, and they need to have the opportunity to come down and look at their property, and in addition, if they have a property manager or somebody, but 10 days is a little tight, very tight. So we wanted to be more flexible with that, increased it to 60 days upon request. And we also, the grantee, once again, Walton County, is going to do an assessment of all properties, video or photography, before any construction of the project commences on the beachfront. So we'll have pictures or video of documentation of what is out there prior to the construction of the project, so that after the project, we'll be able to go back and do the same thing in case there are any damages, or if there are damages claimed, and therefore to protect the county, but also to protect the homeowner. The eighth issue had to deal with the impact on existing erosion control devices. Concerns raised that we were going to be, that this would allow the county the opportunity to go in and rip out the temporary construction that turned into permanent construction that were authorized by the state legislature after Hurricane Dennis. We added language that says, furthermore, grantee agrees not to disturb any existing and permitted major erosion control devices on subject properties such as seawalls, bulkheads, or geotubes, because that's not the purpose of the project. The purpose of the project is construction for hurricane and storm damage reduction. These devices by design should be able to provide storm damage reduction, so we're going to be building in front of them, not taking them out. So we want to make that very clear. I want to hit a few issues real quick that are additional issues of concern that you're going to hear about tonight. I would imagine there'll be many more, but, but just to kind of make sure that you guys are all aware and set the stage, the number one issue that we hear is that the easement is still perpetual. As is noted here on the slide, the easement made it clear that we added the deauthorization language in there so that it ends with the project. That's the response to that. The second is that the public will have the right to use my beach. As we said, 161-141, completely stricken. We're not getting involved in the public use on this easement, and want to make sure that that is removed from the document. I won't own my property. The rights requested in this easement, as you read through it, are only for construction and maintenance of the Walton County Hurricane Storm Damage Reduction Project. Once again, all the use language and everything else is stricken. Property value will go down. This is one that actually was promulgated in western Walton County. We have no information supporting this claim. As a matter of fact, many of the highest-priced properties in Walton County, we can look at Seagrove, in addition to the developed TND properties, the new urban developments, but even old Seagrove, which you all just took ownership of the beach in front of, all those properties are fairly high-priced. They don't, their property's not lower because they have a public beach in front of them. There's other sections of the beach that only gained the ownership of the beach in the past couple of years that historically had been not golf-touching. So we are unaware of any property value decreases in western Walton County as part of that project, nor anywhere else in the state. I will have to rebuild my walkover. There is no requirement that walkovers have to be rebuilt. That is going to be a property owner's decision because it's not something that is part of the project. The county and the Corps, as part of the Hurricane and Storm Damage Reduction Project, is not going to be building walkovers for a variety of reasons. First off is, you know, getting everybody to agree what the walkover looks like, the ornamentation, the liability of our section of the beach. If somebody slips on the walkover that we put in place, who's liable for those damages? A lot of issues related to that in addition to cost, so it's not part of the project. But the homeowner will have the opportunity to rebuild their walkover. The county will allow commercial vending in front of my beach. This was actually changed with the last project. There was language in the ordinance passed as part of the beach activities ordinance now, but it was originally a standalone in that it prevents any vending on the beach in front of a property without the upland landowner's permission. That is in place now, has been in place. The county-state is taking my property with the erosion control line. This is one of those that you're going to hear about tonight. It states statute 161-141, 161 dot 141. And in essence, what is required, the state of Florida requires for any project, dredge and fill type project where you're putting sand in state waters, that before the initiation of construction, you have to go out and identify where the current mean-high water line elevation is. You have to establish that across the entire project. So you literally have a surveyor that goes along and measures the beach and figures out where that is. From that mean-high water elevation survey, they create what's called an erosion control line. In essence, they connect the dots, and that current mean-high water elevation location becomes an erosion control line. And at that point, that state waters is seaward of that. So when you put sand in state waters, it remains state property and state sand. When you put sand upland of that line, it remains upland property and upland ownership. Sand in state waters, this is the same thing happened with western Walton County. Over 350 miles of beaches in Florida have erosion control lines. It is what it is. They're going to destroy my vegetation. There will, there may be impacts. I would actually change it to say there probably will be impacts, but this is an area where the project team wants to further work with the owners and try to minimize the impact to the native vegetation that's existing. A lot of people spend a ton of money trying to protect their property by doing vegetation. We want to try to save as much of that as we can, no doubt about it. In addition, though, with the dunes that are being planted, dune vegetation is being installed on those new dunes. So we will be doing, and it's not just sea oats, it's not a monoculture, so we will be doing sea oat and other dune vegetation that's native to the area to try to hold those dunes in place. The final issue that just came up was the sand quality will be inferior. The sand that's used for this was done after, I'm drawing up, I think it's $600,000, $600,000. It may be close to a million dollars that we've spent over the past 14 years that I've been involved looking for offshore sand. This sand investigation took place after the hurricanes in four and five. We cannot use the Ebb Shoal that was used for the western Walton County project. That was a one-use, one-time project. However, the sand that we did find is part of the same geologic formation, the same old sand ridge that was used in the West Destin project on Holiday Isle in 2013. It's the best sand offshore that's available. We searched long and hard for that. So that's kind of the nine main issues that, that we've heard, that we've tried to address. We've received a number of substantial comments that we've tried to incorporate where possible. Had a great partnership with the Corps to get language changed with our two attorneys, both with Clay Atkinson and with Mr. Davis, and that's kind of where we got to today.
Any questions?
On that last item about the sand quality, you talked about it's the same as the West Destin project, not the West Walton County project, which is a different project. Does that sand comport to our ordinance with regard to the white sand?
It will not initially. It's the same thing that happened with the western Walton County project. That sand has been offshore underwater since many moons ago, thousands of years. They did do a tailor engineering, once they found the sand, one of the things we wanted to do was a weathering study to see how will that sand change as it's exposed to the elements, to rain, to wind, to coastal changes, to waves. They found that all of the sand that they found lightened up. The majority of the sand lightened up to match our sand exactly, the 8-1. Depending on where you go on the beach, I could take you out there today and show you 6-1 sand. I can show you 5-1 sand. But no, it, as it comes out of the pipe, and I want to make it clear, it has been underwater for thousands of years, and so it is going to lighten up over time. They've already demonstrated that it'll lighten up over time, and that's not without, that's not with wave action and other physical impacts on it. So it will lighten up, but initially, it's just like western Walton County was. A lot of people thought, you know, when you look at western Walton County, it was the same way, but it is not the same sand as the Ebb Shoal either, but it's the best that's out there, so it's either this or nothing.
Brad, give me a second. I need to correct the record. This is a workshop, not a special meeting, so if you identify that, please. My question, Brad, under 161-141, by leaving it out of this easement, are we relinquishing any of our rights as the county?
Oh, I am so sorry. I did not, I did not point out our friends are here. I am dying from a sinus infection, but we actually have three representatives of the Corps of Engineers here. At our last meeting, you all requested, if possible, for the Corps to attend. We have Russell Blunt on the end. Russell is a real estate specialist for Mobile District. He's been part of the project team and helped from the very beginning. In the middle is Joe Givhan, and he's an attorney.
What was the name?
Joe Givhan.
Givhan?
Givhan, G-I-V-H-A-N. He's also with the Mobile District. He's been the main federal attorney that's been working with us on this easement, and also David Knoll, who's our project manager that's been involved throughout the process, and I'm very sorry.
Thank you for being here. Any other questions from the board?
You okay?
Good. Okay. Has anybody from the Corps wished to speak as far as the presentation, or you just want to stand by for questions? Okay, outstanding. All right. Okay, I'm making an announcement on behalf of the bailiff. The doorway needs to be kept unobstructed for fire code reasons, so please do that. I think we got the monitors and the sound on out in the hallway and lobby. Okay, we're going to open it up for any public comments. Again, remind you, identify yourself when you come up here and hold your comments to five minutes. There will be no rebuttal, just your original five-minute statement. Okay, I seen your hand go up, ma'am, first. I don't know a lot of the names out there, so I'm going to have to try to remember who was next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Linda Hildreth. I live at Blue Mountain Beach, and I would like Bradley, Brad Pickle to clarify this on page two of the latest easement. I got it off the website, which is what he said he was reading. Page two, together with the continued right of public use and lateral access to the beach seaward of the erosion control line established for this project by the state of Florida. Is that a true statement or not? Is it in effect or is it not?
Brad?
I thought I heard him say that had been taken out.
Yes, the area seaward of the erosion control line is, that's the part that's in state waters and state sand. So yes, that's always going to be open to the public. It's state property. The upland areas are no longer, that information on the upland areas was stricken.
Okay, ma'am.
Okay, so you can take the word perpetual out, but for old people, 50 years is perpetual. You can take the word convey out, but you didn't take it out. It's still there. And you can take 161-141 out, but it still stands. That's not honest with the public. It still takes away my private beach, and while I'm here, I'll just tell you why I don't want to sign the easement. It takes away those special things that made Walton County Beach community special for me, and I think that's why the public comes. It takes away my private beach. It takes away my roads that allow me to ride up and down 38. They're so crowded, I can't, I have to get a reservation for the, my favorite restaurants two weeks before my family comes to get into the restaurant, and I didn't used to have to do that. Life was good, and we could ride up and down and go to the shops and go to the restaurants, and life was good, and it's still good. We still have better than our neighbors have. We do, but I ask you to reconsider. We're losing our quality of life, and I believe that's why the tourists come. They like our quality of life, and we're dealing with numbers now that are unreal and unsustainable. And I beg you to consider what is so beautiful and so special about the beach community at Walton County, and I speak for the tourists that are not here. I have a feeling that's why they come. I ask you to think about how many people we can sustain on our beautiful beaches. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. Behind the second row, yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's John Bausch. My wife is handing out a handout to each of the Commissioners and to the key staff members. I don't intend to go through every single thing that you are probably going to hear, but I do want to put it in context. The second page of the handout actually has the items I'm going to cover. The third page talks about the background that has occurred over the course of the last nine months associated with the project. Again, I don't need to cover it, but I do want to commend the Commission from the last commission meeting to decide to have this special session. I think it's vitally important to the future of Walton County, and I think it's great that you decided to do that. In terms of the context for the project, I think that it's very clear, if we look at the comments that were made on August 14th at WJHG-TV by Jim Bagby, that this is about doubling the size of the industry, and the industry is about our beaches. And I believe that fundamentally, what the impact of this project is, is it is to double the size of the beaches, and in doing so, with the establishment of the ECL, it creates more public beach. If you then move to the next page around key facts, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers filed a joint coastal permit. That's under, there was a request for additional information, and that continues to be under review. And I think one of the understandings that we have is that the Walton County funding is solely going to come from the bed tax, not from any other tax source in Walton County, and I hope that that remains to be the fact. Secondly, if you look at the next page, which is slide six, I think the important thing to describe is that the erosion control line replaces the southern boundary of any individual's property that owns the mean-high water line. And under Florida statute, forget anything else about the easement, under Florida statute, that becomes public property, anything that's south of the ECL. Some view that as a land grab. And anything that is south of that ECL is public, and so I now have two illustrations in your, in your packet for you. And what I did was this is information that Brad Pickle provided that clearly indicated where the dunes are, where the beach is, where the seaward limit of the sand placement is, and as you can see on page seven, it's very clear that the seaward place where the sand is, where the sand is placed, is in the water today in the Gulf of Mexico. is placed is in the water today in the Gulf of Mexico. If you then look at the next page, I noted it so that you could easily see where the current water's edge is based upon these aerials that were taken at the time, and we know that it moves back and forth. But you can see where the water's edge is, and you can see, and this is an area just in front of Viscaya, just to give you a sense as to where this is. You can see that on the left-hand side, it's 160 feet of additional beach that's created, and on the right-hand side, it's roughly 100 feet. There is significant public beach being created in front of homeowners that today own to the Mean High Waterline. Moving to the next page, there are some existing issues that I know the Commission is working on, and I would encourage you to continue to work on those. But there are issues around how vending still has some issues to be resolved. There's current issues with enforcing the public right that exist with private property owners today, and there's already insufficient parking throughout Walton County for beachgoers, not to mention that we're trying to double the visitation to Walton County. Moving on to other concerns about the beach nourishment, my personal view is that additional sand offers little to storms like Aaron, or Ivan, or Dennis. Will it help? Yes. Does it really protect my upland property? I don't believe so. And we've already talked about the ECL. I think the next item about concerns about beach nourishment and...
Your time, sir. No, ma'am, we're not awarding time. OK, sorry.
Well, I wanted to hand this out to you. Thank you for your consideration, and I really hope you think thoughtfully about whether the projects are regardless of whether the easement is good or not.
Thank you. OK, front row, right there.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm Jason White with Alice Beach. Gary Vorbeck is going to hand out some material. Get my file and pull up. We just want to quickly run through some concerns we have with the project in general. I should be able to step through this pretty quickly. You know, first of all, we're in favor of actions being taken to protect the beaches, but our concerns are the following. We're worried about the failure to commit to compliance with the Walton County white sand ordinance. We're concerned about the project design and that the Army Corps of Engineer cost-benefit analysis does not take into account the recreational benefit of the beach. The current design actually, we feel like reduces the recreational area, and the current design also encourages homeowners to actually walk on the new dune that's being created. And we also think that the project design does not adhere to best practices. And also, we're also worried about the easement as proposed by the TDC. As far as the white sand ordinance goes, and we heard a little bit tonight, when asked about the white sand ordinance, there's just a failure to commit to upholding the white sand ordinance. We'll talk about, we found sources, we'll try our best efforts, but at the end of the day, there's just not really a commitment there. And what we'd like to see is that commitment put in the easement itself. This is a great natural resource, and the failure to commit to that, I think is pretty short-sighted. From a project design standpoint, you know, for us, this is kind of an incomplete cost-benefit analysis. It does not take into account the recreational value or benefit, and that's just unfortunately part of the Corps of Engineers, how they do their math. It doesn't make them bad, it's just, that's not how they do things. But we think it's imperative for the TDC to consider the project design from recreational benefit perspective as well. This project design actually decreases the recreational benefit of the beaches. So our experts, our coastal engineers states that this project reduces the amount of usable beach, and actually, this is not a beach nourishment project. This is simply a dune construction project. We feel that continuing to call it a beach nourishment project is somewhat misleading. The next slide will have a bigger picture of the graph we have on there, but this current plan of constructing an additional dune without having a significant widening of the beach actually reduces the amount of usable beach. You know, a traditional nourishment project widens the beach and accomplishes two things. It provides additional shoreline protection, and it increases the amount of usable beach by about 100 to 200 feet. So here's the picture you saw on the previous page, and down below, you'll see the natural beach there, kind of in that yellow color, how it naturally occurs. The blue line is the design, that's the typical Corps design for creating the new dune at elevation 15 and stepping it down to the water. So this is a typical condition at Alice Beach where we have right now about 110 feet of usable beach. Putting this new dune in reduces our usable beach down to about 50 feet. A typical nourishment project actually extends the beach out, and you can see that in the red line where it shows 210 feet of beach. So obviously, we're worried about that as well from our own perspective. Along with this, the dune construction results in walkover removal or walkover output that's landlord of the new dune. So you can imagine where the current walkovers are, where they dump out into the beach. So now they will spill out to that area before the new dune that's created. So when asked, how do these beachfront owners access the water, the answer is simply, well, they can just walk over the dune. Well, that creates a rut, which helps diminish or reduce the impact of having the new dune at all. So it kind of defeats the whole purpose. But in order to retain the protection provided by the new dune, homeowners will have to replace or build a new walkover at their expense. Essentially, this is an indirect tax on the homeowners. In addition, this project was not, as designed, does not comply with best practices for protecting the shoreline, preventing beach erosion. And below is a quote from the American Shore and Beach Preservation Association that states that a wide, flat beach berm with sufficient volume of sand keeps the erosive power of waves from reaching and destroying the dunes and structures. I'm not going to read all of that, but it's there for you all to read. And then now since getting to the easement, I think we hear a lot of the same comments, but you know, from our perspective, we're not going to sign this easement, as Alice Beach will not. It just requires us to give up too much of our rights for this project. You know, our main concerns with it are the duration. Again, y'all have got this copy. Feel free to ask any questions if you have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
OK. Blue jacket. You. Yes, sir. Blue jacket, green shirt. We need a sign sheet.
Hi. I'm Bill Hackmeyer, President of the Viscaya Homeowners Association.
So would you say your last name again?
Bill Hackmeyer.
Hackmeyer.
Hackmeyer, H-A-C-K-M-E-Y-E-L, spells like a sound.
Thank you.
And I'm President of the Association at Viscaya. And we at Viscaya strongly oppose the beach nourishment, and I can just say it right now, we will never sign an easement to permit, you know, beach, you know, adding sand to our beach. I've just given you a list of the owners of Viscaya, all of the owners, and every one of us are 100% opposed. Our land at Viscaya, like many lands on the beach, the deed goes to the Mean High Waterline, just like was previously discussed, and which means, as y'all know, the land north of the Mean High Waterline is private property. We won't allow a nourishment if we can prevent it in any way, which will create a public beach south of our beach edge now, which, as has been explained before, the ECL line, the ECL creates an arbitrary line, and it's close to the water's edge right now. Any water added, contrary to what Brad Pickle said, any water added south of the ECL line is public beach, and I just say contrary to what Brad Pickle said, because Brad said it would, you know, this did not create a public beach. Well, it does, and it's, you know, right in front of our property. I think, and the Viscaya owners think, that it will diminish our property values because a great deal of the value of our beachfront homes is the fact that it's in front of a private beach. And because it is a private beach, I know you all said that vendors were not allowed anyway according to this, the latest rules that have been written, but anybody smoking that stirs up, you know, that prevents us from breathing, the great, you know, the wonderful salt air of the ocean, we will expel, and people that are obnoxious and noisy on the beach with the boom boxes and stuff, right now, with a private beach, we can expel them. Public beach, we won't be able to. We believe it's a waste of Walton County tax dollars because really, as has been discussed before, the, any large hurricane, like in 2005, will completely wipe away that sand, and we will all be left with the same beach that we have now, or, you know, worse, maybe a little better, but it will all, now, all the front beach owners will have a public beach in front of them instead of a private beach. The, we also pay a large percentage, I mean, of property values in relation to the other property values in Walton County because we're assessed largely, which is fine. I mean, you know, we're beachfront property, and it's appropriate that we're assessed high. But if the public beach is put in, the, our property value, you know, contrary to what somebody said, our property value will go down if it has a public beach. That's one of the main features of having a private beach, and some of the houses do not have a private beach in front of them, some of the properties, but ours does, and I know our property value will diminish somewhat because of that, who knows how much. The sand was, it was talked about, sand. I was on the, I was on the Water Directors of Oceana, who, we sued Okaloosa County and won, where we won our battle, because we were afraid, that one reason was, we didn't want a public beach, the other reason was, it was, the sand would be inferior, and they gave us all the gratings of the sand, which has just been discussed. And the sand, the sand that we have in front of our beach in Walton County is the finest, whitest sand I have ever seen anywhere in all my travels throughout the world. So, you know, there's no way that they're going to get equal sand, I don't think. Also, we've put elaborate sand fences in, in front of our property to collect sand, to, you know, to build up our dunes, and, you know, at no cost.
Mr. Hackmeyer, your time's up. Your time's up, sir. Mr. Hackmeyer, your time's up. Thank you. The rose-colored shirt, that's fine, I was going to say pink, but I won't go there.
I'm very proud to wear the pink. My name is Willie Morris. I live at Fort Panic Road. Been in the family since 1968, and we have right now, survey, we've got a northern boundary, northern state. I'd like the Corps of Engineer to address this from whatever question that you can filter back to them before I sign anything, which probably won't be. We've already been led down the primrose path with one of the 161 statements. But when we do survey and say, anything north is yours, anything south is ours.
All the way around.
The states. Anything north belongs to me, the property owner. Anything south... I also have lived in Jupiter, Florida, been beach-renourished eight times. Eight times it's come north of it. Is my point on the south end point certain forever?
I will ask him that. He's going, I'm going to ask the Corps at the conclusion if they have any responses to any of the questions that may have come up.
OK, well, that's what I would like, to get some feedback before I ever sign anything.
Understood.
That's one of my big concerns. Are you stacking the deck all in your favor? If it comes down next week and it's right up to my step, do you now own that? Big concern, big difference, big point of clarification. In the past, with the way it's needed, if it accretes, it's mine. And if it goes away and becomes bottom land, it's the state's. But now you're changing the rules. Now you're filling something in and say anything south of it is mine, but what if tomorrow it's north of it? And it's going to be north of it.
OK.
OK, thanks.
Thank you. Brad, do you want to respond or not? Brad?
Actually, the Corps won't be able to, because that's a state law, but I can tell you, it permanently fixes the southern boundary of their property. So no, let's say, for example, because big numbers are easier, they have 100 feet of beach today, and we add 100 feet of beach, and over time, it erodes back 150 feet. So it erodes 50 feet north of the erosion control line, that's their property. The erosion control line never moves. So there is no rolling easement, would be what the appropriate term that would be. So their property line is going to be the property, at that point, it'll be out in the water. It's permanently fixed forever.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hildreth.
Emmett Hildreth, Blue Mountain Beach Subdivision Number One, Walton County, Florida, beachfront property owner. I'd like to clarify one thing before I start my time, Mr. Chairman.
Your time's starting.
OK. On August 12th, Tuesday, August 12th, I think there was a misunderstanding about my use of the word socialism. I'm getting old, and if I misstated, please forgive me. I did not intend, nor did I think I'd call anybody a socialist or the Board a socialist board. I don't think I did, but if I did, please forgive me. I apologize.
No problem.
In clarification, though, I think it's important that we start from square one in assessing this easement document, and the purpose of this meeting here today is to discuss the merits and the effect and what this easement document is and the effect on Walton County and the people of Walton County. Now, with reference to this easement document, let's start with square one. At this moment in history, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, you have not voted up or down, approve or disapprove of this easement document. It's still before you to vote up or down, yes or no, approve or disapprove of this easement document. That I think we agree on. Secondly, this easement document before us today, and let's discuss what it is and what it will do to this county and the people of this county. I think that's what you need to hear from us. First of all, what it is. By definition, socialism, a hostile attitude towards private property and a bent towards redistribution of wealth, a hostility towards private property rights, and a bent towards redistribution of wealth. That's the classic definition of socialism. That's not my definition. Francis Schaeffer, Margaret Thatcher, James Madison, Mark Levine, Glenn Beck, and Ronald Reagan defined it as such. That's the socialism that I'm talking about, and I'm not calling you a socialist. But in terms of this instrument, it is my opinion that this instrument, this easement... By definition, socialism, a hostile attitude towards private property and a bent towards redistribution of wealth. A hostility towards private property rights and a bent towards redistribution of wealth. That's the classic definition of socialism. That's not my definition. Francis Schaeffer, Margaret Thatcher, James Madison, Mark Levine, Glenn Beck, and Ronald Reagan defined it as such. That's the socialism that I'm talking about. And I'm not calling you a socialist. But in terms of this instrument, it is my opinion that this instrument, this easement, is the epitome and essence of socialism as defined by those people. This instrument is a hostility towards private property rights. And this instrument is a redistribution of wealth. This instrument is taking private property, private land and the control of it and giving it to the government. Now, that's the essence of it. Now, let me quickly go on to some of the ways that's what it is, this instrument. But let me give you the effect of this instrument. This instrument will affect the investment value of every beachfront property owner. It devalues property, when you put a public beach out in front of private property, you devalue it. You're no longer beachfront property owner, and your home and your values is devalued. Liability, let me talk about this, Mr. Mv, because you're dealing in finance, you're certainly gonna be interested in what I have to say here. If Walton County, through its Board of County Commissioners, seeks to put private property, take private property and make government property out there in front of private property, then you are devaluing the beachfront property owner's home. And in a lot of cases, rental homes will no longer be able to rent because of that.
Mr. Eldredth, your time has expired. No, we're not doing that, Mr. Eldredth. No yielding the time. Next speaker, please. I can't remember who got up here first. We'll take the lady first. And I'm gonna do it this way, I had to do it once before. Two, three, four in the back, lady, six, seven. Okay, right now, we're at seven. So, we'll go from there. Ma'am?
I'm Sharon Logg Higgins. I live in the Seacrest area, the original one. Logg Higgins. I have a question, but I'm gonna ask you to address it after I have my other comments because of the time. One thing, I've been very concerned about it since we had the oil spill, is whether it's in the water, sand, et cetera. And I'm also very ecologically oriented. In the Gulf of Mexico, we have miles and miles and miles and miles of dead areas because of toxicity. I've done research on the corexit. It is now nanoparticles, and it is out in those miles where I think this sand may be taken from. I don't want it. It's toxic. And that's something that Army Corps of Engineers may know more of, but I have done a lot of studying on it. Walkovers. We're responsible for walkovers. I've been here 23 years. The worst hurricane we had in terms of taking our beach was Opal in 95. I have never had any renourishment, ever, in front of my beach. But my whole dune has been totally replaced, and I still have a good 100 feet of beach in front of me. I don't feel any need for renourishment. We've recovered personally from Opal, Ivan, Dennis, and every other one. I have the pictures of my property. They're gonna take the bottom third of my walkover, which means I have to rebuild my walkover. I don't want that expense. It also means that whoever does come on the beach, whom I allow, is 15 feet closer to me. And when I'm out eating dinner, they're that much closer with my loss of privacy. The biggest cost has always been the walkover. We've had to replace the bottom part of our walkover several times. A lot of it is because, you know, fault of their own, but Rosary Beach's stuff has come down with the water and slammed into everything. And you know the wood that piles up at the other end of the county when we've had that. The question that I have is, will my deed and my title be affected if I were to sell my home? And people are asking me about that. That's something I think very much needs to be addressed. Because if this is all in the air and it's not addressed, then anyone who wants to sell their property is gonna have a big problem. One of the problems that we have, and it's why everybody says, I live on the beach. When people come and park on the beach, I go down to meet them. I make sure everyone is aware of all of the county ordinances, et cetera. And I say, you know, I expect you to adhere to our ordinance. If you don't, I'm gonna ask you not to come back here. I don't know if I'll have the right to do that anymore. So, that's a really important thing. And just because the whole parking thing has come concurrent with this, I noticed in my community, which is Seacrest Camp Creek area, they're thinking of adding a lot of parking in the right of way. I'm gonna tell you, when we have things parked on either side of our driveway, we cannot see what's coming or going on 30A. That's a real, real hazard. So, I don't advise the parking in the right of way. You've got the size of the car, and a lot of them are huge, opening the door, pulling out all the beach paraphernalia, they're gonna be blocking bike paths, and they're gonna be creating a danger. That's pretty much it. But I would like to know, because I know people who are saying, if it gets worse here, they're moving. How does this affect the deed and the title? Does anyone have an answer?
Well, I don't have the answer. I don't know if canceled, and we're not, not today, anyway. This is a workshop. We're not taking any action. We're just here and taking comments.
This is a question that I have, and I would like to see addressed by you as our Commissioners.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Number two.
Thank you, Commissioners Gary, Drake. Couple of questions to start off. And I understand on the Western Walton project, there was 6.9 miles of beach renourished and 453 properties that were affected in 2006. How many construction easements were obtained in that project? About? And did Walton County place any sand on private litoral beachfront property without a construction easement?
Brad, uh...
And if you wanted, wait until, so I have more time, or give me more time?
No, I won't give you more time. Go ahead.
Okay. So, let me, so, in principle, I don't have a problem with beach renourishment or as revised the 50-year construction easement. But severing my litoral property from contact with the Gulf is a deal breaker. I'm not willing to trade sand to lose contact with the Gulf. What prevents the Corps of Engineers in Walton County from filling submerged land and separating private property from the Gulf for more than 50 feet seaward of the ECL? And so, what point does my now beachview private property become, that I lose access to the Gulf? At what distance does separation materially and substantially impair the upland owners' access to the beach? 50 feet? 100 feet? 500 feet? I recently watched the August 5th TDC meeting also, where there was a lot of discussion about beach vendors monopolizing the beach. Where Grayton beachfront owners prevented vendors from placing umbrellas and chairs on the beach, and that there was an altercation with a wedding party. And I'm not sure I want to be part of that. I'm asking the Corps of Engineers, and I'm asking Walton County as the local project sponsors, to exclude our private property from the joint coastal application and recording of the ECL on our property, similar to Okaloosa Western Beach Restoration Joint Permit for the Oceana condos and the 18 adjacent property owners there. Will the BCC commit to doing that tonight? And if I have time and Brad can answer my original question, I'd appreciate that.
Brad, can you?
I do have to address Western Walton County, but I actually, since we have the Corps here, I'd like them to address what would happen with this project if we don't get construction easements. Because it's totally different. Really quick, the Western Walton County project was a state-local project. There was no federal involvement. It was a one-time, one-shot deal. With that project, we did pursue construction easements. I did not have the final number that we got. Got to the end, and the county commission, when it got to the time to bid the project, decided to invoke police powers to go on the properties and build the beach. It was a state-local project that was allowed. With a federal project, and here's where I want to turn it over, my understanding is that police powers are not allowed, and I would like them to address it because I've been called a liar on this one more than once.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In order for us...
Need to get a mic. Yeah, we got you.
In order for us to do this project, we require the necessary easements from the county. It's up to the county to obtain those easements from the property owners. We require that in order to get the right of entry for us to go in and do the project. So, without that, there is no project from our end.
But if you've got, I'll use an arbitrary number, you've got 300 beach owners right there, and 200 of them sign easement, doesn't mean that you won't do the 200, you just bypass the other 100. Or you don't do any of it at all.
We will assess it, and if there is a justifiable project within those reaches where we have an easement, we will go forward with it. And when I say justifiable, I mean, justifiable, I mean, a project that is structurally sustainable, meets the economic requirements and the benefits to, that justify us expending the federal funds to do the project.
Okay. But that's an individual choice of the beach owner, beachfront owner, if they wish to sign the easement or not. It's, nobody's twisting their arm to sign it. Is that correct? Brad?
It's a voluntary easement. Yes, sir.
All right. Number three, I'm sorry.
Chairman, just to clarify a point. In 2007, under the Western Walton County project, it was less than 20. I know four that were not signed, where they went around them. And the gentleman referred to Oceana. That was not part of the Western Walton County Eastern Destin project. That was a different project run for a different purpose. And so, what was done in Oceana has nothing to do with what was done in 2006, 2007 with Western Walton County and Destin. Those were two entirely different sets of circumstances and projects.
Okay. I think we're, number three. Third, I pointed to number three. I hope you kept up with your number. Come forward.
I think it was me.
It was you? Okay. Number four, you be ready.
I hope I didn't jump somebody. My name is Scott Koval. I am a Gulffront beach owner in Grayton Beach. One point I want to make is, I don't know if I was supposed to get written notice of any of this, but I've never gotten anything in the mail about any of this conversation. I've just heard it anecdotally very recently from people on the beach. So, I don't, so I'm not terribly prepared to discuss this. I'm coming here with an open mind. But one question that arose when Brad was speaking, I want to ask you to respond when you get a chance, is the vendor issue. So, I understand we're gonna own to, I guess, deduce to the ECL, which is gonna be determined by this October 2013 survey that was done. So, everything added via the project is gonna be public beach. So, Emmett, do I understand, Brad, what you said before, that notwithstanding the fact that that waterward new addition of the ECL, notwithstanding the fact it's public, you still, the county still can't grant permits for vendors to do private activities?
No, sir.
Without my upland approval?
Yes, sir. That's the way it is today, and it's the way it'll continue. It was initially written to protect the homeowners in Western Walton County. And so, yes, sir. So, even though it's public beach south of your property, you still have to get permission to the upland landowner.
Okay. So, that answers one question. Thank you. The second one is, I don't know whether the county commissioner, county commission has spoken at all or considered the beach permit driving issue, if that is gonna be treated the same way. I don't know whether you all intend to, if somebody has a valid beach driving permit, are they gonna be able to go westward of where they can currently? Because that's gonna be newly...
I think the present beach ordinance restricts it, like the Grayton, but you can't go any further.
Yeah. And I'm speaking just about Grayton, but that's presently, because that's bumping up against Lily Belcher's property, which is private. She owns the Mean High Watermark. And notwithstanding the fact that Walton County granted permits years ago and allowed people to drive in front of it, that stopped years ago. But with this new addition of public beach, I wonder if the county commission has a position on whether they can allow driving over what was just a great expense, you know, brought in to help protect the beaches. It seems counterintuitive to me to allow people to do that. Those are my two primary concerns. The, I'm surprised that, I'm new to this, to the easement document I printed this morning. I've looked at it, the perpetual language, and I understand now it's been tied to congressional's approval of the, Congress's approval of the project. Jason White from Alice Beach had a statistic about, of all the other projects that have been permitted like that, what was the, three have what?
Uh, well, sir.
Okay. It has to do with, I believe I'm saying that, it's one thing to say it ties, I think there are only three projects that Congress has terminated approval for in the last 30 years that we know of. So, my point is, this is effectively, I think, a perpetual easement. Which seems, if you have a finite amount of funding for a finite project, I don't understand the logic between it needing to be a perpetual easement. Why don't we do a more realistic time period of even a year, two years, or whatever, to get the thing built? And then the construction easement's done. And so, anyway, that's another point. Last permit issue I've got with an observation, and again, I'm an open mind, I'm not sure if I'm for or against, I'm trying to information gather here. But the sand quality, after Ivan, we brought in at personal expense, a bunch of sand, rebuilt the dune, got a permit for it through DEP, planted 2,000 sea oats, Arlene, early 2005, wiped that all away. So, when Dennis hit, we were exposed, and anyway, we had another, we had to move our house back 60 feet and all that type of stuff. But in that process, we repeatedly, when we did get approval to bring sand in, it had to match, and the county made us comply with the sand quality. So, I was told at that time, even though the sand we brought in matched the sand quality spectrum that's required of the county, and that it was gonna improve and change color and whiten and everything, it hadn't really done that very well. And that's even sand, that's even sand that was permitted. So, I mean, that was, that fit the spectrum. So, I'm just pointing that out for your, for your consideration. It's gonna be different. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. See, number four.
May I address one part of that?
Go ahead.
Real quickly, I just want to address the fact that it's not a one-time project. We're talking today about the initial construction event. This project is actually designed to go for a minimum of 50 years. The current estimate is that there would be the initial restoration, followed by four nourishments of the project area over the course of 50 years. If there's a storm, there would be more than four. But just so we know, that's the reason why it has to continue. It's not a one-time off project like Western Walton County was.
All right, thank you. Ma'am?
I'm Sherry Chase, a beachfront owner at Blue Mountain Beach, and I'll submit this to you for the record after I talk. I guess like most of us at Blue Mountain, you know, we have seawalls only out of need. We saw our sand wash into the Gulf of Mexico after Opal, and you did it for free for us and after Ivan, and then Dennis. The sand did not prevent us from having problems with our home falling into the Gulf of Mexico. Why would I or other beachfront owners give the county or other government entities the right to take away our ability to build a seawall if need be? Or perform major repair to our existing seawalls? I want you to be aware, the TDC claims that sand will protect our upland property and structures. I've seen the BCC thinking, why would we not want sand over a seawall option? Well, if you haven't lived on the beach at Blue Mountain, perhaps I can educate you. Had you lived here through Opal, Ivan, or Dennis, you would have seen how quickly sand washes out and that we needed to have seawalls to protect our homes. There's an FAC rule... our homes. There's an FAC ruling for coastal construction, including new seawalls. I have a lot of neighbors that don't have seawalls. I stand on my own. Water can get behind my seawall, without a doubt. Major repairs to those seawalls in existence, I won't be able to do it if I have nourishment. The ruling prohibits construction or major repair of seawalls in an area where beach nourishment is approved. We all know that in Walton County over 200 seawalls have been built in emergency during Ivan, Dennis, and storm events thereafter. Katrina. Should this occur again, we all know that sand alone will not stop the waves from washing out our dunes back out to the sea. I spent $70,000 in sand alone after Dennis, thinking I did not need a seawall. That was just my property. Wrong. I needed a seawall. My house would have fallen down. I think many of you saw my house, you stood right in front of it. And we all know some of our seawalls are not going to withstand a major storm event without need of major repair work. You also asked us to cover our seawalls with vegetation, which most of us did. You didn't want to see our seawalls. You can't see my seawall. It's absolutely beautiful, because I did cover it with vegetation. You asked us to cover it with vegetation, now you're asking us to permit you to dump sand on my vegetation and kill my vegetation. That's not right. Should it occur again, sand's not going to stop the waves, as I said. We all know some of our seawalls are not going to withstand a major storm event. We're going to have to get re-permitted, which will be easier the second time around, because we've already got permits. But that doesn't mean we won't have major repair work, and we won't get permitted again if nourishment is slated for us. We also know that those that do not currently have seawalls, and there's many of us still out there today, we will not be given the opportunity to have one, even in the event that one is needed, because the ruling, and it's FAC 62B 33.0051 prohibits seawall permitting where beach nourishment restoration or sand transfer is scheduled and funding is made available. The county must realize, the easement language will be challenged when it comes to seawall armoring. The other thing that's already been mentioned is, why would I want to spend $50,000 to $100,000 to rebuild my dune walkover, which I've rebuilt many times before? But now I'd be forced to rebuild it unless I walk through my dunes. So that's, the TDC, who's going to pay for them to rebuild all their walkovers? It's going to get covered up with sand. Those steps are not going to survive being covered up with sand. So has the TDC allocated all that money to rebuild their dune walkovers? The easement language does not state that Walton County or its other agents will vegetate our new sand dune. It says that it can, but it takes away our ability to nourish our own dune, and gives you the ability to do it, but it does not state that you will do it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. See, I think we're at number five.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your attention. Thank you for being here and listening to us. We have been very...
I need you, ma'am, I need you.
Donna Knox, Donna Knox. I built a home, my husband and I built a home over 20 years ago, beachfront in Walton County. And everybody here has been very cordial and listening. And I think, can I ask, those beachfront homeowners that are in the audience, would you stand?
No, ma'am.
No, you can't do that?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right. I was coached wrong, but anyway.
Okay.
Because, because the next thing I'd say is, those that are against it, please sit down. I think you see that most of the people here are energized to come out on a beautiful evening like this and tell you our concerns. I do know that we've spoken to a number of Walton County beachfront owners who are very energized about this. And they are very willing to take this to court and contribute for the lawsuits. I don't want us to be adversaries to the Walton County Board. We don't want to be adversaries, because we depend on your legislation and attention to our needs. But, we do respectfully request that the Commissioners stop this beach renourishment effort. And in the absence of killing this project, would a viable solution be to make the beachfront owners happy in Walton County, just to have those who wish to have their beachfront-nourished properties accepted, and those who don't decide not to sign on for it? Okay?
Okay, thank you.
And thank you. I yield my time.
Yes, ma'am. All right, we're at number six. Number six. I didn't get you Suzanne. You're number six.
Suzanne, I thought I was. I raised my hand, but don't start my time now. Suzanne Harris, and we are beachfront owners at Edgewater, and we have 175 units. And I can tell all these people in the audience, trust me, the government is here to help you. That is such a bunch of crap. And I'm not talking about y'all, I'm just talking about everything I've heard. I don't know how many have Obama insurance, but God help you if you do, because he was here to help me. We did the beach renourishment at the beginning, and in Walton County, in Western Walton where I am. I can give you all kinds of statistics if you want them, and I'll have them ready for the next meeting. But if you think Seascape, which is a public beach now, if you think Ariel Dunes, if you think Majestic Sun, if you think their values haven't gone down, and their owners aren't just mad as seven hells because you can't keep the public off their beach and they own their units, they have. But did the Walton County taxes go down? Oh no, they're still all billed as beachfront owners. Edgewater took the beach renourishment. I don't think I signed the easement, and I'll tell you why. Because when y'all came and told me it wasn't just y'all, it was a group before y'all, I couldn't have a volleyball net on my beach. Guess why? We did beach renourishment, and therefore, you can't put the volleyball net on your beach, and we can tell you that, because we're the government. I'm sorry, that was a court battle, and that's not one any of us want to fight again. What I'm going to tell you is, you have a major problem in this county. I would give my easement to Jim Bagby, a perpetual easement for the rest of his life. I'd give it to Brad Pickle for one day. Brad Pickle makes, Brad Pickle makes a living on Walton County. That is his job, to get beach renourishment. If we don't do beach renourishment, Brad Pickle doesn't have a job. So, no to the easement to Brad Pickle. I might even give the Corps an easement, because I know the Corps doesn't care if I have a volleyball net or not. But you cannot trust everything that's being said here. And I'm just telling you, this is not in any way storm protection. I have been here since 1980. I had a house at Seagrove, and before we came to Edgewater. I have run Edgewater Beach condominiums since, for 22 years out of 30. When Opal hit, I was here, I stayed in the building. My dunes were gone five days before the storm hit. When Dennis hit, no, Ivan hit first. We spent $400,000 bringing sand in. It was gone five days before Dennis hit. So it did no protection, and I rebuilt my own dunes again at another 400-something thousand dollars. Walton County was wonderful. Y'all were going to replenish my dunes. You sent me some sea oats that might be six inches tall. I hired the dune doctor out of Pensacola, and she came, and she replanted our dunes, and our dunes are now 10 feet high. And you're not going to put any sand on top of my dune. And you're not going to build out to the front. And the public, this is not storm protection. This is to get water from the, from the water line, in front of the CCL forward, so that all of the tourists, and believe me, my building is a rental building. And I want the tourists in my building. But I do not want all the tourists building north of the bay, everywhere else, to come to my beach and be on my building. Y'all have 10-foot easements for the public. Y'all didn't think, the people before you didn't think, that all of these people north, not north of the bay, I'm talking about just north of scenic golf drive, north of 30A, they had nowhere to go to the beach. They have a 10-foot easement. You can go down the 10 feet to the water, and you can come back. But you can't go sit in front of this house, because they have a deed to the High Time Meat Line, and you can't go sit in front of, to the left. You can just go to the water and back. We have no parking. We have major flooding in this county. I don't hear any public groups, any public forums, or anything from y'all, on what are you going to do when it rains 20 inches? It doesn't matter if the dunes are gone. What are you going to do when the tourists down here are flooded in all these houses? The cars are flooded out, and they're swimming out of their houses like y'all have heard before. You need to get your priorities in order. You need to figure out about what we're going to do about stormwater drainage. And I went to one of you and asked you, would you give Walton County an easement to your backyard? And I was told by one of you sitting up there, no, they wouldn't. I don't think any of you that owned beachfront property right now would want the public in front of your house. And I think you need to get your priorities in order, get the stormwater figured out, because if you think this is the beginning, it's not.
Thank you. Okay, I think... Number seven. Okay, number eight. Somebody jumped ahead of you. Come on up, sir.
I'm Charles Booth.
Booth?
Booth, Walton Dunes on Beachfront Trail. I thought Mr. Chapman was speaking to me, and I couldn't read the sound.
Well, that's all right.
I had three questions that encompass some comments as well. I asked at the last meeting here about the impact of this project on the outfall of the coastal dune lakes. I'm continuing to be concerned that, I cannot understand how you can extend the toe of the dune seaward, raise the level of the flat sand, and not have an impact on the outfall sweep area of the coastal dune lakes. And I think Mr. Pickle said at the last meeting that the Corps was looking into how that would be handled, and with them here, possibly we could get an answer. The, and what I've been able to derive from the drawings and the information that I have, the project will place a dune at least 15 feet high to the crest. There's a 50-foot width, that's a target width, and raise the flat sand level. If the property that we have, if the dunes already exceed the targets of the project, what benefit is there to us in giving an easement to allow you to maintain or do the project if we already meet or exceed the target that you have written into the project? The third question I had is similar to one that was asked earlier, about whether any sand has been placed seaward of the ECL in any other locations in Western Walton County. Have you placed sand seaward of the ECL when the property owner, landward of that point, did not sign the easement? It would appear from some of the comments that have been made, that all of the sand that accretes to the beach seaward of the ECL, if you did a project, for example, on both sides of our property, and it came on to the seaward of the ECL on our property, and we didn't give an easement, we have, effectively, you have the right to be there anyway. What is the effect of the easement, or the granting of the easement, or not granting of the easement, on the accretion of the sand seaward of the ECL? And can any of those be answered in two minutes?
I'm not sure, Brad. I need your mic.
The first one is, what happens if sand comes landward of an ECL? Any sand that comes landward of the ECL, natural processes are replaced by dredge and fill project, becomes public property. Seaward of the ECL, all lands, once the ECL is established, naturally replaced by dredge and fill, is state property. So that does not change. If, all of a sudden, say we add 25 feet seaward of the ECL, and it grows out to 50, then 50 feet is state property, because it's seaward of the ECL. So, that does not...
So, whether we give you an easement or not, you can come put the sand out there, and you have that property regardless of whether we grant it. Is that what you're saying?
No, sir. We can't do, we can't build that project without doing the upland portion. The Corps is not going to build the ECL portion without building the upland portion.
Okay.
The second one, as far as benefit of the project, all I'd say is Hurricane Sandy impacts, $5 billion allocated by Congress, $4 billion being spent, over $1 billion already been used for storm damage reduction. I don't know. Other areas have done it, 300-plus miles in the state of Florida has built beaches for storm protection. If you've got 50 feet more of sand in front of your house, then that's 50 more feet that has to erode before it gets to your house. I don't know how else to answer whether or not there's a benefit provided by putting a new dune in the sand.
Okay.
Unless the Corps wants to talk about their process at all, or the benefits of the project.
In regard, sorry, I missed a part of that.
Talking to Mike. Thank you.
Just the benefits of the project, he wants, the benefit of doing a storm damage reduction project.
If our property already exceeds the project targets in the height and width and depth...
If you're part of the federal project, though, if you do have a situation where you need to require...
Is this on?
Yeah.
Okay. If you're part of the federal project, and you're to, and you, you do have a storm that comes through, and it does the damage, then you'd be part of the renourishment of your beach by having signed the easement, being part of the federal project.
To repair that.
Correct.
And the coastal dune lake outfall?
We, did, we understand the importance of those to environment, ecological condition that they provide. And we did a lot of work looking at those historically, as well as reading all the published data that we could get a hold of. And our coastal engineer could speak much better to that than what I can, but I know that that was a major consideration. And they tried to design that to allow the natural sweep of those outfalls that they've had historically and will continue to have.
As part of the request for additional information that DEP sent to the Corps back in July, July 3rd, I believe?
Right. We're working through those, the RAI right now. And we expect to have our responses back to that probably within the next month or so.
Thank you. Okay, I don't know, you number seven, right?
I'm official number seven.
All right, we're back on track.
Thank you. I'm Lisa Bausch, and I'm going to make this quick. I just have a few questions. I don't know if Brad or the Corps, either one can answer them. But first and foremost, I don't know how many people remember that we got kind of stuck with an HCP plan several years back. And we just recently discovered that the HCP is actually in the process of public comments, and has been advertised as such. We're real curious how the beach nourishment plan and the HCP mesh together. Do, you know, have all the issues that could potentially come up because of the HCP been addressed within the beach nourishment plan, or vice versa? We, you know, I feel for all of you. I know you got stuck with the HCP, just like the rest of us did, really, and kind of blindsided, I think. But we just want to make sure that we don't end up with some sort of unintended consequences down the road, where we're not indemnified should, you know, something come out of that, or a third party of some other sort comes along and says that there's been some violation again, and here we go again all over. The other thing that I wanted to ask is, will all local funds to pay for the beach nourishment only come from the beach nourishment penny of the bed tax? And what assurance do we have that over a 50-year period, that that one cent will continue to be charged and continue to be allocated to beach renourishment in the event it has to be renourished over and over? Is Walton County willing to exclude from the projects any owner who does not want an ECL? Or are we going to have to do that in some sort of a, you know, court manner, or litigation, or something, which none of us ever wants to do, if we can avoid? And what are you going to do if you discover that there's just... And what are you going to do if you discover that there's just an inordinate amount of homeowners that are unwilling to sign the easement? Are you just gonna drop the project or not? And I'm not asking for answers to these right this minute because I don't expect you to have already determined all that. The last couple of things I just want to make real quick comments on is while I know this board is very interested in trying to make sure that dinghyin' on the beach is done in a way that keeps it under control, that's good for the tourists, good for the homeowners, et cetera, you know, this board does change from time to time. I don't know how much assurance we have that public policy that's set by this board will run for years to come. We, you know, that can change with each board that sits here. And then the last question I have is, is it possible that if an ECL was established for this project, could it at any time later be moved? Or is that a permanent, forever and ever ECL line that can never be moved in the event of future renourishment? That may be a Brad question, I'm not sure. And just because of all the things you've heard today, I just want to say we appreciate you listening to all this. But as it stands today, my husband and I are not comfortable signing an easement for our properties. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. I think we're.
Could I ask Brad to do one thing?
Yes.
Can you explain why we have an HCP? Because of the seawalls and all that?
Somebody else maybe. I wasn't involved in that. I'm sorry, I wasn't. I wasn't involved in that.
What's an HCP? Habitat Conservation Plan.
Okay.
I can address one quick part on that in that we are coordinating, Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, who are active players in the HCP development, are also active players in reviewing our permit. So yes, we are coordinating with.
All right. Okay, I think we're up to number eight. Come forward, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Kent Safrat, I'm attorney with Hopping Green and Sam's in Tallahassee, Florida, here on behalf of a few clients. And I've had the pleasure previously to represent.
Kent, are your clients present?
No, they're not.
Okay, thank you.
Had the pleasure to represent some prior landowners in the renourishment nine years ago that was litigated way up the court system and those landowners were post the renourishment then. I've also had the pleasure to represent Oceana condo that you've heard about today in excluding them and 18 property owners from that project in Okaloosa County. And I'll get to some issues with that in a little bit. But I think some of the prior speakers are right. This is an assault. This project is an assault on private property. The easement is an assault on private property. And I think Mr. Bausch said what this project really is. This is about tourism and it's doubling a tourism attraction here. That's what it's, that's what it's about. These people don't want it, they didn't want it nine years ago because of what they have to give up for it. And right now, the Corps of Engineers at the behest of the county has applied for a construction permit over many of these landowners' properties without their permission. That would be like me applying for a construction permit for a pier on your beachfront property without your permission. When you don't want it. Who is the Corps to do that? Who is the county to do that? Who am I to apply for a permit, a construction permit, on your property without your permission? We've got the, we've got the cart before the horse here. The county needs to go out and find out who wants this project first, get their permission, then go to DEP and apply for such a permit, and then go put an ECL on their property that want it. You don't go force this on these landowners and say, don't worry, we'll get the landowners' permission later to apply for a permit, or we will use eminent domain to take their property rights so that we can go forward with the project, or even use the police power. And I'll get to that in a minute. Again, the easement is an assault on private properties, not only for what it says, but for what it doesn't say. And Ms. Bausch hit on this point. This board may change in two years. Just because there's an ordinance today that says, no, a beach vendor has to get the landowners' permission, doesn't mean in three years, if the majority of this board is replaced with owners of beach vending companies, we'll change that ordinance to eliminate that requirement. Put it in the easement. Put it in the easement that these people are gonna sign that says, any beach vendor on the public beach in front of their property has to get their permission previously. Put it in the easement. That runs with the land. That runs more than 50 years perpetually or however long the easement is. Second, the funding issue. We've heard that the funding is limited to the bed tax. Well, that's the proposed funding. Up in Okaloosa County, we know the county commission and the city there proposed a municipal special benefit unit and actually taxed the beachfront owners and the first tier, second tier, and third tier people to pay for the restoration up there. That was the one at Oceana and Jetty East. So the actual landowners were not only opposed to the project, but they were being taxed by their local government to pay for it. What prevents a new board in two years from implementing one of those MSBUs? Absolutely nothing. Put it in the ordinance, put it, not in the ordinance, put it in the easement. That, to the extent any county revenues beyond bed tax monies will be used, this easement is hereby revoked. And then a county commission later on doesn't have that option lest they lose these easements. So put it in the easement, mean what you say. And there's a lot, a lot of distrust here from the county and from government and from the Corps and everywhere. And it's not personal to this commission because prior commissions are the ones that have promised actions and then, and then turned around and did something different that created that distrust. And I'll take you back to the 2006 project. I represented multiple landowners and they were told, just like they have been in this case, if you don't sign an easement, you don't get the project. You don't sign an easement, you don't get the project. They were told that, they were told that, they were told that. When it comes down to it, the county and the city got about 36% of the easements of those 450-some-odd property owners. That's how many people actively signed an easement that were in favor of that project. When it came down to it, this board in March 27, 2006, voted to use the police power, which is questionable at best, to direct their contractor to go onto private property landward of the ECL and in the dune and create the project without the easement. That's pretty audacious for a government to say, I know what's best for you, landowner, and I'm directing my contractor to come on your property and place sand. That's what occurred in that case. And so when you sit here and hear them say, oh, well, there's no easement, if you don't sign an easement, this project won't occur? Nobody's gonna believe that. In fact, take these landowners out of the permit application. The Corps has no business even applying for a permit on their property with DEP without their permission. And lastly, I had some comments on the sand color. I'll just say this, the ALJ in the prior Oceana case found that sand color insufficient under DEP's own rules, later reversed by DEP, but the scene is not gonna be the same.
All right, thank you. Okay, I think we're at number nine. Is there a nine? Well, I see a couple of new hands, so we'll go nine over here. Ma'am, I can't quite, there you go, you're number 10.
Good afternoon. My name is David Mundy. I've been a visitor here to Walton County since 1988. Five years ago, purchased property here in the county. And just a year ago, realized my family's dream of owning some beachfront property here in the county. I'm gonna distill my comments down to what to me are three simple truths. Simple truth number one is we have the most beautiful beach in the world right here. And the white sand is part of that. And Mr. Infeld, you asked a good question about what assurances do we have about the sand quality that we'll get? And there's no absolute certainty in these kind of things. But it seems to me that you, as a council, can and ought to do more to ensure the quality of the sand is preserved. Because after all, you are the stewards of the assets of this county and one of its prime crown jewels is the beach. So I urge you to do that. And I will say, I come here open-minded. I come here open-minded in part because I've only heard about this process through word of mouth. Rhonda Skipper and the tax collector had no problem finding me at home in Atlanta. But I never got a notice about, about this process. And I want to say that my plan is to come down and retire here, so I'm taking a long-term view about that. But simple truth number one is that we have the most beautiful beach. And questions about vendors, questions about sand quality, those are vitally important. Assurances can be added into the easement in a way that is not there now. Please make sure you're doing all to protect that. Simple truth number two, there will be more distance to the water than there currently is if the project goes as planned. And that's a potential problem for my family. My son, my oldest son is cerebral palsy. When we selected a beachfront home, part of that process was finding a home that would be accessible to him. And I have some grave concerns about that additional 50, 60, 70 feet. That may make the difference between him being able to enjoy the water that he can now and not being able to enjoy it. And at some point, I expect I'm gonna get to a point where that extra 50 or 60, 70 feet may make a difference. And I'm concerned about that. Simple truth number three is that this board is charged with protecting all of the county's interests and the beach is a prime asset. And so I urge you again to make certain that all of the concerns that are being raised here are addressed in this easement. This process is a great process to solicit input and it seems to me that more input is needed. But as the Corps said, at some point, if not enough easements are obtained, the project doesn't make sense. And you don't have to be an engineer to get to that conclusion. And I think it's only fair to the folks on both sides of this issue that we get a more definitive answer from the Corps than we've gotten so far as to what is that dividing line? Or what's the range? Is it 50%? Is it 30%? I think folks ought to know at what point would the process not become viable? Because that's, that's part of democracy. You know, short of filing lawsuits, if enough property owners on the beach decide that they don't want to sign this easement, ought that not to be a strong enough voice to you all that at least under the present plan, the majority does not want this? Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. All right, number 10. There's number 10. I've seen somebody, you'd be number 11, sir.
Hello, my name is Ashley LeBlanc. I'm here to obtain information for over 200 condominium owners in Miramar Beach. And I also feel like there's been no notification. I learned this through an email from a board member. Excuse me. I know of my 200 owners that if they knew about what was going on, I'd see some of them and they're not here. So I don't feel like we're being notified. Excuse me. I'm ill-prepared because I didn't know anything about this, but a couple of concerns I have from my experience with, and I'm also new to the area, the easement on Scenic 98 that you all took for, I guess, the walk, sidewalk beautification project. I currently irrigate it. I maintain it. It's not ours as the property manager, but, so I can't tell people not to park there when they've decided to park on it. I can't get the county to respond to me about the fact that people are parking on it and blocking our view to turn onto scenic. But I irrigate it and I pay every time an irrigation head gets hurt and I mow it. But you can see a prime example of the parking lot, Summerspell is one of my properties, and the parking lot on the corner is public and the stretch of grass there is yellow and overgrown and weed-ridden and not maintained next to my section that I pay, our association pays to maintain. So my concern is, aside from telling 200 of my owners that we now have to build a new walkover, is will the county have the manpower to maintain this additional public beach that it's creating, the 100 additional feet or 50 to 100, and the easements that they are creating? Because at this point, and I hate to even use the word Facebook, but there's a Facebook campaign about people being upset that property left by visitors, tents, chairs, umbrellas, are not being able to be cleaned up properly because there's not enough, there are not enough county employees to do that. So will you be able to maintain this additional beach that you are pushing on the owners? And so that's my concern, is that you are adding a lot of additional cost to my homeowners because I think we're gonna end up maintaining this property that you all are adding on our plate.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, number 11.
My name is Larry Victor, 1833 Scenic Golf Drive. I have beachfront property and I have a couple of questions and bring some issues that maybe has not been addressed yet. Number one is, is the county going to provide any money towards this project? Is that something y'all can answer, other than bed tax?
Well, it's gonna be provided through bed tax, collective for beach nourishment and also beach nourishment reserves, beach nourishment collections, admin collections, and a possible loan as necessary. The locals' share is 55%.
Ma'am, what's the dollar value of that?
Currently estimated 35 million, 30 to 35 million.
Zero to the county, it all comes from the bed tax, to answer your question.
No county.
They couldn't hear you, Jim, because I could hear you.
No county funds will be used for this, it's all coming from the bed tax.
Okay. First, I'd like to bring up, right now, my area on Franchesca Beach is more or less an oasis for families. People rent from us and pay a premium because they want a private beach. They don't have to worry about their kids out front, they can sit out front and see what's going on. I don't understand how, may having a public beach in front of a private beach is going to make people realize that there's an invisible line and no one that's using the public, public beach can cross over into the private beach. Secondly is, I'm gonna have to reduce my rent 20 to 30% because I'm not gonna be able to get the same amount. Because secondly is, I'm not gonna be able to pay, going to mean a reduction in the bed tax, 20 or 30%. So you've got to, I think, understand, taking consideration how it's going to affect our rentals in that area. Thirdly is, the lady just before me alluded to the fact of policing the public beach. Our beach on Franchesca Beach, we more or less police it ourselves. We clean it up. When the sheriff department comes by, they come through, no problem, keep on going. Coming through the private beach, you're gonna have one issue after another. Not only do you have trash, who's gonna pick it up? There's a lot of expense that has not been taken in consideration when you're talking about putting a public beach in front of our private beaches. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just two quick points on the last two speakers. They both have public beaches in front of their properties today because they were recipients of sand in the initial Western Walton County Beach Nourishment Project. So the beach will be maintained exactly like it is today because that beach is public in front of their properties.
All right, thank you. All right, I.
... This is the plat showing my property runs all the way.
Hand it to counsel.
I'm a, I am a Franchesca Beach owner, not a Delos, and I run all the way to High Water Drive.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anybody that has not spoke that wants to speak?
Hello, I'm Kristin Nostrand. I have three units at Walton Dunes, 350 beachfront trail. I'm also president of the homeowners' association there. Really just a clarifying question. At the previous meeting, we discussed the validity of the current list of beachfront homeowners. You've heard from several today that they wouldn't be here if it wasn't for word of mouth. I too wouldn't be here today if I wasn't at the previous meeting. I was at the previous meeting because of word of mouth. So despite owning three, three units myself, I have yet to be officially notified in any way of this, the whole easement. So just a clarification question, how are you planning to, A, identify, B, notify homeowners of this? And then, two, if someone doesn't vote, either because of ignorance or because they're voluntarily abstaining from voting, is it assumed that they're in agreement?
Jim, you wanna address the notification?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, the Corps, we had a title agency survey all the beachfront property owners to determine who had the right to give the easement, which may not be the same person that's on or the same entity that's on the property appraiser's website. They have given that information to the Corps and the Corps will mail the easement.
No, they'll give us the information.
They'll give us the information back, I'm sorry, to mail the easement, so, or the approval. And those will go to each of those 978 or, yeah, by certified letter and ask for them to sign and return the easement. And that's how they will get notified. Nobody. Nobody, and there is no vote. They either sign the easement or they don't sign the easement.
Voting board or...
Right. And so if they don't sign the easement, we get that information. When we did the Western Walton County project, we did a follow-up, I believe, a couple of times and say, "Did you get this? We want to make sure you're the right person and that you got it, you haven't moved or whatever." And I think there were about twenty that we had moved, you know, people will move from the time the title company did the search till the time it got mailed. But that's how the notification. And then they either do return the easement or they don't return the easement.
And if they don't return it?
Then they don't return it.
Then they don't have the permission. So, so no return is a no vote, or no, okay. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, no closed public comments. Going to ask the Corps if they wish to address anything that may have been brought up for the benefit of the Board.
I think the only thing to, I took notes here, and I just wanted to point out that this is a, for us, and the language that we use is a hurricane and storm damage reduction project. It's not a beach nourishment project. The berm and dune profile that we are developing is what the engineers decided to model, not that, that they came, this is the result of their modeling and design effort. And that we determined would economically justify placement of the dune and berm system. So there's no more, no less sand than that that we are adding from our perspective. That's what went into the design. And the language that we have within the easement is the language that we're required per federal, federal regulation. And it's the same language that we apply to all of our beach projects. That's it.
Okay. Board have any other questions? Public comments closed, sir. Seeing none. All right, this will be an agenda item at a future BCC board meeting. Form of the easement will be determined at that time and it will not require you to participate if you so not to. So once it's determined what it may be, once the Board takes action, then it'd be your individual choice as to whether you sign or don't sign. With that said, if you have anything else, we stand...